Calling the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of April 19th, 2021 to order. Arivolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Mike McGee?
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And as you can see, Mayor Chamberlain is not here tonight, so we're going to turn it over to City Attorney Michaela.
So, under the Illinois Municipal Code, in the absence of the mayor, it's incumbent upon the City Council to appoint an acting chair for tonight's meeting. The acting chair sits simply as an alderman, has the vote of an alderman, but presides over the meeting and essentially runs the meeting. It's not required by law. Historically, the council has usually chosen the most or one of the most senior aldermen present to conduct the meeting. The two most senior aldermen present this evening are Alderman Stevens and Alderman Snow, so it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to appoint an acting chair by name.
I nominate Clayton Stevens.
We have a motion to-
Alderman Brereton has something to say.
One second, Alderman Brereton. We have a motion from Alderman Snow to appoint Alderman Stevens as the acting chair. Is there a second to that motion?
I'd like to know who's going to give the invocation. Why did that get skipped?
Well?
We haven't skipped it yet.
If you would like to do the invocation, Alderman Brereton, if there's no objection, we can have you do that.
It should be somebody in attendance, since it's probably going to be-
We have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint the acting chair. I think it would be appropriate, if there's no discussion, to take a vote upon that, and then I'll let the acting chair decide whether or not they want to have an invocation. So, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. Those in favor of appointing Alderman Stevens as the acting chair, say aye. Those opposed, say no.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, my roll call vote.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Do I have to answer?
You don't have to.
Ten in favor?
I'm going to see if you just want to come on up so that you're facing the camera.
Are you sure that will see me? I'm sorry, I really don't know any good invocation, so.
That's two.
No, I already don't know anything, so I'm sorry. Okay, please do, thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, please give us guidance tonight as we conduct the city's business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Matt. Okay. Does anyone want to do public comment tonight? Anyone?
There's no one registered.
Nope, no one registered. We need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 5th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Flurry, first, second, Porter. Has anybody got any questions, comments, amendments to the minutes as they're entered? Seeing none, roll vote, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
We have no public hearings, but we do have a Pam from Growth Dimensions would like to give us a nice little message and a little bit of a video.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it. Good evening, I'm Pamela Lopez-Fetis, Executive Director to Growth Dimensions, and with me today is our President of Growth Dimensions, Mr. John Wolfe. Thank you very much for joining me. So, we wanted to share with you first, when you think of economic development, what do you think of? You think of really marketing the community, trying to sell our community, trying to bring businesses in. So, we wanted to kind of share with you, and I apologize for my back, to share with you a little bit about the role of economic development before we go into our presentation. So, the role of economic development is really the practice of improving the community and economic well-being, as well as the quality of life in our community. And this is included as a broad range of activities. And in addition to attracting high-quality jobs to the area, it's to foster growth, develop that tax base, to develop collaborations within our community, and include a number of stakeholders in what we're doing. So, our role is really, as an analyst, to look at data, to evaluate data, and how we're where we need to move forward. We're a catalyst for supporting community initiatives. We fill the gaps from some of the issues, we identify some of the issues, and where we're missing some of those needs in our community. We try to advocate on behalf of our community, showcase what are our great assets. We have to look forward as a visionary, and then we also have to educate the community about some of the information, and sometimes misinformation that's out there. So, some of the ways and means that we do this is by providing information about, you know, financial information to our area. We navigate systems, we market, we provide that technical assistance to businesses that need it, we improve our business climate. We try to make it a business-friendly environment because making this more seamless for our businesses and make it easier to navigate through this makes it improved relationships and encourage to come here. Developing partnerships and networks, and analyzing and planning, as we've done in many of these activities. So, and again, some of those core activities are really to market to businesses, to retain businesses in our area, to help with entrepreneurship and small business development, to create those networks and partnerships, and it could be strategic planning, revitalization, and as well as neighborhood development. So, many people ask, why do we focus on particular industries and not others? So, I wanted to share with you this picture. This is a picture of the 2021 indirect jobs for retail industry. So, it would take two jobs in manufacturing to bring one job in another area, in another so, let's say we get 100 jobs in manufacturing, then we increase the opportunity to bring, we can bring 50 jobs in healthcare, in retail, in transportation logistics, in government, and all these other areas. Whereas in retail, it would take us five jobs to bring those, that same one job. So, that's why we focus on manufacturing, logistics, food processing, because it brings, it actually brings more jobs in retail than focusing on retail. So, that's kind of the picture I wanted to share with you. This is for the jobs that it brings and the percentages in retail, and this is manufacturing. So, again, some of the retail trade, the administration, administrative jobs, certain ones are higher in retail than they are in manufacturing. But I want you to take away that it does take, in 2021, the analysis and the data shows that it takes two jobs in manufacturing to bring one additional job in the economy. Takes five additional jobs in retail to bring one job into the economy. So, the numbers are just much greater. In addition, we have to look at the wages that are earned, not only now, but over time. And the blue line is manufacturing, the orange being retail. Even over time, the opportunity for individual income is greater. This makes self-sufficient people, self-sufficient a community, people that are able to afford their cost of living, being able to afford, being able to spend money within the community. So, that's another reason why increasing the jobs in some of those areas are where some of our focus on. And again, this is not that we don't focus on commercial and retail. We do, we help, we support, but if we target some of the jobs like in the larger industries and manufacturing and logistics, we are helping the commercial and retail industry. So, we're doing both. So, the top scale is focused on personal income. The second one is focused on benefits. So, many of our retail community don't get benefits, so this is where, even over time, the resources that are available to our individuals, our community, our residents, are just greater when it comes to manufacturing. Again, this is just one comparison, but be glad to share more as you need, as you're interested. So, what are some of our challenges? So, a lot of, we talk a lot about why businesses choose our area, but a lot of times we don't talk about why they don't choose our area. So, we have to focus on some of the challenges that we have. Businesses are looking for access to land, they're looking for capital, they're looking for utilities. Basically, what we call them is shovel-ready. So, if they have all those components together, they're considered a shovel-ready site. And that's the challenge, is making more sites shovel-ready. They're also looking for network and connections, so they're looking for that pipeline of suppliers that are available to them. So, that's very important, that we're connecting them with all the resources that they need. And that also means resources for workforce. So, they need work, our workforce needs quality jobs, they need education and training that will help them be self-sufficient, be able to support their families, and they need opportunities for advancement. And as you know, our communities need, you know, some basic services, we need amenities in our community, and we need some diversification, so we have, are more resilient. So, Growth Dimensions, I just kind of highlight, I wanted to kind of give you that background because, again, we're more than marketing. This is why we focus on the areas that we do. So, one of the areas of focus that we've been involved in is a regional interchange study, which the city has also been very instrumentally involved. This will help us determine infrastructure and land use and development that's needed, especially the Irene Road interchange. This will also help us identify what resources are necessary for us to be, to attract more businesses into that area. So, what will, what financial investments do we as a region, as we as a local area, and as a state need to make, to make that interchange more shovel-ready and for business-ready? So, that's one of the areas that we're focused on. Another one is a broadband-ready team, you know, in order to respond to some of the inequities in digital access. As you know, during this period of time, COVID has really taught us, we've had large gaps in our community, not only with businesses, but with residents. And I would like to say that in the city, we may have less gaps than in the country, but that's not the case. It's spotty throughout. And so, we're working with a team in order to analyze the information, where our gaps are, and how we need to respond to those gaps. We're also focused with a, on the region-wide freight advisory group, and this is also to help us develop that transportation management and efficiency plan. So, not just focus on rail, but how our transportation patterns are around that rail, and how we are helping businesses get to that last mile. So, those are just three things that we're focusing on a regional basis. And a local basis, where we're looking at the automotive innovation network. So, we created this network last year in order to respond to the needs of the automotive industry in workforce, innovation, training, and then solutions. As you know, the automotive industry is at a time where it's really changing quite drastically. We're going to have electrification either in the vehicles, even more so than we do now, or they're going to be totally electrification. So, as we're transitioning to this, we want to be prepared, we want to prepare our community. Fiat Chrysler Automotive, now Stellantis, it's called Stellantis, is a big employer in our region. It attracts a workforce from a 70-mile radius. So, we need to address this as a region, as Northern Illinois, and how we can sustain that business here, and how we can help them grow, because it's only going to help our community in the long run. We're also working with growing entrepreneurs. So, our venture program, we started last year with support from the Kaufman Foundation. And this is also to build, develop aspiring entrepreneurs in our community, and to help our entrepreneurs in our community grow, and connect them with those resources that are needed. So, we've started two programs, one is the Fast Track Training Program, and another one is the Source Finder Resource Map. So, that's going to be a map that's going to be available at the end of the summer. And thank you to the city, we were able to pass through dollars through you to help address these needs. Another program that we started last March was Called Forward Boone County. This was a way that our leaders across, Boone County leaders across government, healthcare, education, workforce, businesses, and community-based organizations can work together on solutions. Right now, we are focused on responding to the COVID, and how we need to develop and unify our response and solutions to our community. And I think we've, probably most of you have been involved at some level, at the resources, the education that we've provided, the resources for economic recovery, the volunteering activities, vaccinations, so we've covered that spectrum. And again, we wanted to make this seamless across the community. I know some people may not think that that has been the most organized role, but I talked to other communities around us, and I talked to state partners, and they're like, what you guys are doing is working. It's, you have been more efficient and more responsive to the community needs than any other community in Illinois. So, I, you know, have to say that our leaders have been working together to try to respond to this. One of the other projects that we're working on is a 60-by-25 community, and this is, I haven't talked about this too much. We've been working with the Belvidere School District, and this is a group of workforce development, education, human services, and community-based organizations, as well as employers and economic development, trying to respond to, as a community-level approaches, to college readiness. So, what we want to do is make sure that our pipeline of workforce, our pipeline of youth are ready for the careers, and so we can keep them here, keep them working, and that where our employers will be able to develop that pipeline for credentials that they may need in their workplace, and again, leading to self-sufficient individuals that will spend more money into the community. So, to date, since this year, in 2021, since January 1st, we have responded to, actually, it's growing every day, 16 active industrial and commercial projects. Two of these projects, who we cannot share some details about, have identified Boone County as their primary location. So, until they are ready to announce it, we cannot share additional data, but we're hoping that, and we're very confident, that these projects will be able to announce very soon. And last I wanted to highlight is a video, and we talked about attraction and retention, or attracting business to our community. So, this is a video that we wanted to show to highlight our logistical advantages and our close proximity to transportation and quality of life. So, if you don't mind, I am going to show you this video. It just goes figure, it doesn't, the, I'm sorry, I'm just going to make sure I, my, the sound is working here. It was working earlier. It's really much better with the sound. I actually have a link on here, and yes, it's on YouTube, it's on our website, it's, we actually have shorter clips too that we're going to be using. We're going to be sharing this with an international conference that is 80 international markets to highlight our area.
You know what's not working?
For some reason-
You're plugged into the projector, and so, but you didn't tell it to use the projector speakers.
It was working earlier, so I tested it, and for some reason, it's just not like in, it's always when you're on camera, right? It really is quite neat with the-
Let's see, where is this? Is it the only video on your site?
You can try YouTube, no, you have a seven.
Is it Impact 2017?
Thank you. So, please do listen to it, because it is quite neat with the music, because it makes you feel that energy. It really does, and it, you know, we want everyone to be as proud as we are to be part of this community, and we think that this video really kind of highlights that. Any questions?
I have a question.
The Fast Track Training Program, is that related to the college and career readiness? Is that what that is, or what is the Fast Track Training Program?
Fast Track Training Program is for entrepreneurs or aspiring entrepreneurs. So, we actually feel that even leaders of businesses, we have a lot of businesses that want to pass over their business to a relative, and they, it helps you define marketing, business plan, networking opportunities, financial resources. It's really a great opportunity across a spectrum of how to create a business, how to maintain that business. As we know, most businesses do not succeed after two years, a lot, especially small businesses. A lot of businesses get into business because they're passionate about what they do, but they don't really have the plan in order to sustain themselves and to grow. So, especially during COVID, some of those businesses had multiple challenges, and Growth Dimensions got involved in this because we were being contacted by a number of businesses that didn't know where to go, and maybe needed a lot more hand-holding through the process of growth or sustainability. And so, this was a resource that we, as I've been told by a number of people within the community, that's the Cadillac of services. There are services, there's a number of training programs out there, but this is one of the best training programs that's out there. You're welcome.
Marsha, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, thank you, Clayton. So, we've been focused on manufacturing for years, and a whole lot in the past eight years under Mayor Chamberlain, yet we haven't had an influx of new retail or commercial growth here. So, what good are an influx of manufacturing jobs if there's nowhere, you know, and those jobs attract employees regionally, not just over here? So, what good are they if there's nowhere to spend money here? And when will all of these manufacturing jobs create retail and commercial? And if your assessment is true, then why haven't they?
So, retail, there is a couple of points that they look at. Not only space that's available, they look at your workforce, how many people do you have, they look at transportation patterns, so they look at where intersections, key intersections, where they want to attract the businesses, and they look at the age of your residents. So, who will shop here? So, some retail businesses will focus on college towns. They want a young college group to come through there. There's others that'll focus on different populations. So, there's a number of things that they will highlight in order to come here. It's by increasing those transportation, traffic patterns, it's by increasing housing that's available to young people so we could sustain them here in our community. It's, there's a lot of things that we've been working on in order to make that happen. There's a lot of businesses that we have met with, that focus across manufacturing, different types of manufacturing, and food processing, and even entertainment facility. These are some of the reasons that we know that they haven't chose Boone County or Belvidere for this location. One, they couldn't negotiate a price with the landowner. Another one, they didn't like the building. Another one, it wasn't close enough to Chicago. Another one, they didn't have water and sewer available at that location, and the plans for water or sewer weren't quick enough for what they wanted. They look at high-speed internet. So, those are the reasons why, that we know of, that they did not choose this location. But there are some that we just don't know the reason why. Could be that, you know, they didn't have a relative in the area, and they chose another location, or they wanted a warmer climate. You know, it could be something as simple as that. But this is, retail businesses, they can come here, you have some businesses that are very passionate about this community, and will stay in this community no matter what, have chosen this community no matter what, because they believe in this community. And then there's others that are attracted to this community, and those are some of the key points that we're looking for.
Does anyone else have any questions for Pam? If not, thank you very much, Pam, for your nice little-
Thank you.
-presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to number seven, expenditures, expenditures. General and special fund expenditures of $1,759,842.69. General and special fund expenditures of $1,759,842.63. Can I have a motion to, in a second? Motion by Matt, second by?
Dan.
Dan Arivolo. Do we have any questions on anything in the report?
I have multiple questions.
Mr. Porter has one first.
Okay, I'm not sure who can answer this one, but I'm just curious about this on page, let's see.
Page two.
The Heritage Days Fund for $5,000. What, is that something they pay ahead of time, or how exactly does that work?
That, sorry. That was budgeted money for 2020 that we had not put in the account yet. So we did that before the end of this fiscal year.
So that rolls over?
Mm-hmm.
Another question there, Tom?
Yeah, this was for Chief Heiser. I'm just curious about this one thing from Rough Tough Products for seat covers for a vehicle for $794. What is that?
Thank you, Alderman. That is for the new BTEC unit that we have coming to us. That particular vehicle comes with just vinyl seats because it's, it's an XXL. It's the lowest, lowest model you can get in that, in that line. So I have something to protect the seats from getting torn up, all, all the seats.
Is it the pumper truck?
This will be the rapid, rapid-response vehicle that we got coming. It's almost here. Yep.
Anything else, Tom? Marcia, what do you have for questions?
Thank you. I don't know who's gonna answer this one without Becky being there. But on page four, we paid R1, $3,082.50. I didn't realize that Region One planning was something that we budgeted for and made payments to. So I don't know if anybody has any information on that or not.
That is something we budget for and make payments on.
Okay, my next three, I guess, are for Chief Woody. They're pretty much all along the same lines as page nine, page 11, and page 12. They are all vehicle towed. And the one on page nine was for an accident. So are these other vehicles just breaking down? Are we running out of gas? What's going on?
Nope. Let me address which one specifically, because they're not all squad cars. Page nine.
Squad two?
Yeah, squad nine was squad two, which was involved in a crash. The vehicle was stolen and ultimately crashed by the offender. So it had to be removed from the location that it was crashed in and then ultimately towed.
I'm sorry, did you just say it was stolen?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, it was probably three, four weeks ago. I was parked outside of the residence, and the officer was inside for a death investigation. And the, apparently, the window was left down and unbeknownst to the officer that the vehicle, when running, could still be operated. And somebody got into the vehicle and stole it.
All right.
That's not the phone call I would make, want to make to the chief about my vehicle?
No, it's not the phone call the chief wants to get either. Where were, where were the other ones?
The other two are just towed on 11 and 12. The last one on 11 and the first one on 12. It doesn't say squad numbers.
Yeah, the, they're actually, the same incident, it comes from vehicles that were, an incident that happened at Salantis where several vehicles were stolen. The vehicle the suspects drove in, they had abandoned it near the crime scene. We had that vehicle towed. And then one of the vehicles that they stole, they had wrecked and ultimately left at the scene. We had that vehicle towed.
Oh, okay, so these weren't squads?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any?
I wanted to point out one for Chief Heiser. On page 17, we paid the Lifestyle Garage Inc. for some coatplate stairs, $1,500. I had the opportunity to actually see those and walk on those. And I think that, I just gotta say that, I think that was money well spent. Very, very nice job. And I don't think the, we'll have to worry about our firefighters slipping on those stairs.
Thank you for that. Coming up here, we have a few opportunities for people to come and see what we've done as far as our remodeling. So thanks for coming by, and I welcome anyone to come by and see what we've done.
And then I have a couple, I think, for Brent. We did a traffic control sign to Decker Supply Company. I'm assuming that that is either a yield or a stop sign. Can you tell me where we put that?
Parking lot signs, I'm gonna have to check and see how many signs were included in that. My guess, there'd be more than one.
Okay. And then on the next page, on page 25, from Menards and Cherry Valley, we bought some sign posts. You know what those are for?
Yes, we also, we had previously purchased Parkinot 7, new signs to replace the green faded signs in Parkinot 7 downtown. And those are the wood posts that were purchased to put up those signs. We had two signs, one, one off of Lincoln on the, on the new entrance there, and one off of South State, or North State, I'm sorry.
Okay, and the last one I have for you, Brent, is on page 27. We paid, I guess it's V3 Companies, for the Brownfield project, $4,050. Is that gonna be covered under the Brownfield grant?
Yes, that's included, those expenses are included in the Brownfield grant.
Okay, thank you. And I think this one might be Gina. For Economic Development on page 30. We, we, we gave Stolberg, Carlson, and somebody else for 227 Logan Avenue, which my GPS says that's the flower bin, $3,500, and it says that Economic Development facade improvement. Would that, would that not be included for our downtown facade grant program? Or do they not get to partake in that because they're not actually downtown? Or, I don't know, can you tell me what, what that $3,500 is for?
That's exactly what it is. Last year, they were awarded $5,000 for the facade improvement grant, which commonly known as a downtown facade grant program. So they got the back deck finished and submitted the paid invoice. So that gave them $3,500 of their $5,000. The rest of the project is for the front deck and wheelchair ramp. And due to the extremely high cost of lumber at the moment, that project is stalled in order to finish and get the remaining $1,500 reimbursement. But that is correct. That is the downtown facade grant reimbursement.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
I just have one, one more, Clayton. And I think this is again for Chief Woody. On page 38, it's under our capital assets and capital projects. It's for two 2021 Dodge Durangos. Were those for the last year's fiscal budget?
Yes.
And we just now purchased them?
Yes, that, that's correct. We had them ordered, and it took us that long to get those vehicles in stock. And we just started being able to outfit them and stripe them. It would have been shortly after we received the million-dollar grant through the CARES, CARES Act, when we requested them, and we just got those vehicles in.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought we had voted on those at, like, towards the end of the fiscal year before we started our new budget. Thank you. That's all I had, Clayton.
Do we have any more questions about payables? Then we need to take a vote?
Okay. Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Now we're gonna need a motion on water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $396,146.45. Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll make that motion.
Dan Snow motion, Tom Porter second. Do I have any questions? Seeing no questions, we need a vote.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, committee reports and minutes to city officers. A through I will be placed on file. J, minutes of the committee of the whole, building, planning, and zoning, public works, April 12, 2021. Can I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Dan Arivolo, second by Wendy Frank. Any corrections, concerns, or other on that? Seeing none, let's vote.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Unfinished business, gaming ordinance for 600 Logan Avenue was tabled May, March 1st. I don't think there's been anything or...
That can remain on the table. We have had additional conversation with Mr. Chahari, the owner, and we are still waiting to hear exactly what he's going to do.
Okay. Ten, new business, ordinance 531H, first reading. An ordinance establishing recapture of trip road reconstruction between Crystal Parkway and Corporate Parkway in the city of Belvidere, Illinois. Ordinance 532H, first reading. Ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, video gaming, in the PB Planned Business District, 884 Belvidere Road. Ordinance 533H, first reading. An ordinance to provide temporary relief for full requirement of Section 98-12A3 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code, code, sorry, for fiscal year 2022. 512021 to 4302022. And then we need our Resolution 2021-6. Resolution directing the Planning Department to publish zoning map for the city of Belvidere. Do we have to vote on that? Oh, any questions or concerns about that? Sorry, motion to do the publishing? Dan Snow, second, Matt Flurry. Do we have any questions or concerns about it? Seeing none, let's vote.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Resolution 2021-7. A resolution authorizing the execution of an easement agreement for the expansion of General Mills Park.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman. Couple of different points on this, on this transaction. As you know, this relates to the expansion of General Mills Park, which also relates to the last item on your agenda, which is the grant from General Mills to outfit that expansion. I had sent the proposed easement agreement to the owners of the land that would be granting us the easement. I finally heard back from them today. They've sent it to their attorneys for approval. So in a moment, I'm gonna suggest we not act on this tonight. And I'm gonna suggest that we table it for at least two weeks so that we can hear back from his attorney, because if there's any changes that need to be made, it does make sense to prove it now and have to make the changes later. The second point I wanted to make, though, was, and I hate to bore you to death with this stuff, but an easement, you do take an interest in property. No, similar to buying the property. You get the right to use the property in this case forever. When you do that, of course, you always run the risk of environmental liability. I don't want to scare you, because I don't think there is any here. We did our own Phase 1 site assessments on the property immediately adjacent to it, where we put the park that's there now. The current owner did one when he obtained the property that showed it was clean. However, under federal law, if we go out and get our own Phase 1 study for this property, it's like buying insurance. We are not on the hook for any potential cleanup costs that could be there in the future. We are on the hook, of course, to contain contamination. There isn't any, but I can't say that, because I'm not an environmental engineer. So I did price out a Phase 1 environmental audit. I went to the same company we used for the other parcel, because they're already familiar with it. And the cost to do a Phase 1 environmental audit is $1,900. As the attorney, I have to recommend that you get a Phase 1 environmental audit whenever you obtain an interest in non-residential property. It protects, quite frankly, it protects the city. In this case, your risk is probably minimal, given what's happened around the property. But again, as such, the council wishes to procure that Phase 1 environmental audit. Obviously, the easement is on the agenda. This relates directly to taking the easement. Is there general assent to me procuring that Phase 1 environmental audit? Or would you rather not do that?
I make a motion, we do the Phase 1 audit.
Motion by Snow to do the Phase 1, second by Wendy to do the Phase 1.
Questions or comments?
Do I have any questions or comments about this?
Roll call.
None seen?
I have a question.
Marcia, what's your question?
So Attorney Drella, seeing how this is basically gonna be, I mean, it's General Mills Park, but it's, it's city-owned park. In terms of liability, we are basically take, you know, using the land from the landowner. But basically, the city is liable for anything, anybody that, I don't know, gets hurt, or what kind of liability are we facing there?
Okay, just for clarification, I think, I think you understand where we're at. I'm talking about environmental liability, not risk of injury, falling off a swing, separating a leg playing soccer, something like that. And of course, whenever you... And of course, whenever you operate any feature in the city, there is that risk of liability, that is insured by our insurance company, um, so we have insurance to cover those incidents, no different than a slip and fall on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Any other questions about the phase-one? Uh, Tom Porter?
Well, I'm just gonna comment, I think it's probably a good idea to do it.
Any other questions about, uh, about this? Can we have a roll call vote?
Yep, Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Do we need a motion to table this?
In one moment, I will actually hold off, though, on procuring that, or ordering that phase-one, until I know that we have agreement with the other side, 'cause it doesn't make sense to spend nineteen hundred dollars if they change the minds on the easement, so I'll hold off on that.
Dan Snow?
So, in that regard, do we wait, um, once you get there that they're willing to, then we do the phase-one, and then do the resolution?
I should know that this week, whether or not they're gonna agree to that or not, um, and we just simply won't sign the easement until we get the phase-one results back.
So we can approve the resolution a couple of weeks from now, potentially?
Correct.
And then still go forward, but the execution of it won't occur until administration is...
We may have the phase-one done by then, 'cause again, these guys have done the site evaluation out there already. Um, so it would be appropriate, though, to have a motion to table this until the next city council meeting.
Can I make that a motion?
Motion by Snow.
Alderman Dan Snow, second by Alderman Tom Porter. Do we have to vote on that?
Yep.
Yes.
Can we have a roll call vote on the tabling of that?
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Marcia, B please.
Thank you. A, motion to reimburse Jim Cannaby at eight-sixteen Willow Street for a sewer backup that occurred March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of three thousand seven hundred dollars, subject to the homeowner installing a sewer backup prevention system acceptable to the Public Works Department with reimbursement by the city of Belvidere in accordance with city policy.
Okay, motion out of committee, uh, do we have any concerns from the alderpeople? The only thing I have a concern about is that we're paying for a furnace, a durable item in this, or we don't think we need to be paying for a durable item. Cleanup and the, you know, putting in the check valve, yeah, but a durable item like a furnace, no. Alderman Snow?
I, I would disagree, the, the damage occurred to a furnace and the, um, again, I believe it was explained that to try to reuse that equipment would cause a safety issue throughout the rest of the house and contamination, so I don't feel it's unreasonable.
'Cause, that's, we weren't paying, we were paying for the, the clean, for, for that much money, it'd be just for the cleanup and part of the furnace, was it?
Um, for that much money?
I got it right here.
I, I believe originally it was a lot more money than that, and we, uh, we whacked it down to thirty-seven hundred.
Okay, yeah, it looks like it, we're paying for cleanup part of the furnace, and then it was talked about the, paying for the backflow?
Yeah, the orig- the original, the original claim submitted by the property owner was for five thousand two hundred dollars, and it was reduced down to thirty-seven hundred, and then the, uh, backflow device would be a separate, per the state's policy, which is up to a twenty-five hundred dollar maximum, uh, uh, on the city's side.
Any other questions or concerns?
Alderman Harrison?
Uh, Alderman Porter first, Rick?
Well, again, I'm just gonna say what I said last time, you know, the homeowners do have the option of having sewer backup insurance, I know it's expensive, because I, I checked into it, but, um, that is partially owner responsibility too, I feel.
Okay, any more questions, Tom? Uh, Alderman Brerton? Rick?
Uh, yeah, thank you, I have the same thing as Alderman Porter, I believe that it had been determined that there was no water and sewer backup coverage on this policy, uh, which is an option, and a reasonably priced option.
Okay, any more concerns, motions, or if not, roll call vote.
Snow?
Yes.
Stevens?
Uh, yes.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed. Now for B, Marcia.
B, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one outdoor warning siren system annual preventative maintenance agreement with Braniff Communications in the amount of five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion out of committee, any questions or concerns?
I have a question for Brent.
Yes, Marcia.
Um, so, what, what fund is this, um, coming out of, usually there is something that tells me, um, where this money's coming from? What line item?
Uh, I don't know a specific line item, because it's not in the Public Works, it's in the city general line items, um, there is money budgeted each year for the siren communications, um, but I don't have the specific number, I apologize.
Okay, that's fine, it's a general fund thing, though.
That's correct.
Any other questions or concerns? None, roll call vote?
Stevens?
Yes.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Marcia, C please.
C, motion to approve the agreement with Lakeland Biologists for the twenty-twenty-one Farmington Pond Maintenance Program at an estimated cost of sixteen thousand dollars. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Special Services area.
Uh, motion out of committee, any questions or concerns? None noted, roll call please.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Uh, Marcia, D.
B, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one motor fuel tax street maintenance program.
Motion out of committee, any questions, concerns, changes? Wendy?
Brent, is this the revised?
Yeah, the list you have in your, in your packet is the revision, the change was made, uh, West Ninth Street was taken off, and Eleventh Avenue between tenth and twelfth was added.
Yes, I asked, the, the street in front of my house is perfectly fine, the Eleventh Avenue, it's got holes in it, and you can see gravel, so I asked to have that one put on there instead. Any other concerns? Motion out of committee, uh, roll call please.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Uh, finance and personnel, Tom, would you please read E?
Okay, uh, E, motion to approve audit agreement letter, including appendix A for additional services up to fifteen thousand dollars, dated April seventh, two thousand twenty-one, with Kikich LLP.
Motion out of committee, any concerns, comments, Tom?
Yeah, I know Becky's not here, and I forgot to bring this paper with me, can somebody explain this again to me, was this for, because Becky was not gonna be here, they had to do additional services, the audit company, was that what it was?
The additional fifteen thousand dollars, that's correct, yes.
Yes, it was up to fifteen thousand, I, as I recall?
Yes, that's correct.
Doesn't mean it'll be fifteen, but up to.
Okay, so, if we hire somebody soon for that position, does that mean that we probably won't need to use this money then?
I doubt that, you'll have to use some of it anyway, because even, I don't think you'll have somebody that soon, but even if you did, they're gonna be getting their feet up to speed and knowing where things are at and what have you, so they will still need some assistance with this process.
Any other concerns? Uh, Clint Morris, please.
So, Alderman Porter, technically, we have looked at it as if, um, current administration evidently felt that the future administration should probably make that hire, and, uh, so, that will not be done, uh, or we're gonna need help. Before we can actually hire anybody. I think that's where, I think it was not set.
Any other questions or concerns from anybody? None noted, roll call please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Ten to zero. Now then, F, do we need to make a motion and do that, or table it, since we're still...
No, it'd be appropriate to accept the, the donation at this time, if something happens with the property, we can always send it back if we have to.
Okay, Tom, F please.
Brent's looking at me like I'm, are you in agreement? Yeah.
That's okay, just understand that we have received the check from General Mills, but we have not cashed it yet, and we will not cash it until all the other details are worked out.
Tom, F please.
Okay, F, motion to accept grant from General Mills, an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for additional improvements to General Mills Park.
Motion out of committee, any questions, concerns about this? None noted, roll call please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Well, that's the last on the motion, unless anyone else has anything for the good of the city.
I did see, uh, thirty cents difference between for the water and sewer, I just realized it on the memo, and when the, there's two different, it's totally thirty cents difference, I don't know which one's correct.
It is a scripner's error, and it'll be reflected in the minutes.
That's all I had, motion to adjourn.
Any second for the two adjourn. Porter? Anyone that, uh, doesn't want to adjourn, please? None? None, no, no, no objections to quitting? Uh, we're outta here at eight-oh-two, thank you.